It now being 6 o'clock, I will call the August 20th Board of Suckman meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. Put your phones on vibrate. The first item on our agenda is we're going to take up the special town meeting warrant, so I'm going to ask Mr. Russo to introduce for us.
So we've been working a long time on the Atwood property purchase, and we have gotten to the place of having drafted an article for the warrant, and so we're going to go ahead and open, go through a series of motions that will get the special town meeting warrant opened, the article accepted, and then closed. So I'd like to make a motion that we open the special town meeting warrant scheduled for September 20th.
Do you have to announce the time? Oh, this is just the warrant, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
At 7:00 PM.
Okay.
Second?
Second. John Trainor's second. I'm taking minutes tonight because...
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And now I make a motion that the board accept and recommend the Article 1 that has been emailed to you. With one note, that we want to approve the warrant, we also want to authorize the chair to make such clerical and editorial changes of form only to the article as requested by the bond counsel. The long and short of that is that we have, our town council has submitted the article to bond counsel who has to go over it and make sure the language is okay when we get to the lending part of it. We have not heard back from bond counsel, we expect to this week. So what that motion leaves open is minor clerical or editorial changes that the chair could improve.
All right.
So that's the motion to accept and recommend.
I'll second.
So that's Christine.
All those in favor with that amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then next is, we can go ahead and sign it. So I'll pass this down.
I'm going to have you do two originals, just in case Tara needs two.
So is the thinking that if we had to amend this based on recommendations of town council or of bond counsel, that those would be amendments that would be made on town meeting floor?
No, the goal would be with that, that hopefully this week, if there was anything he wanted changed, we'd get it changed.
Gotcha.
At very worst, we could amend on town meeting floor. I think we'd very much like to avoid that if possible.
I did see one email from bond counsel late today, and he looked largely okay with it. He just had some pointers for our town council.
Okay. So if there's going to be anything else, we'll have it by the end of the week, and once we have that, we give this to Liz and Tara, and they put it through the process of posting and getting it out. So with that, unless anyone has any other comments, I'm going to make a motion that we close the special town meeting warrant.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Christine's second. All right.
All right. So we now officially have a special town meeting. All right.
That's about six months of work, right there.
That will be at the Dennett Elementary School, September 20th, I believe at 7 o'clock?
7:00 PM.
So that takes care of that, and I think Linda Letty, the co-chair of the Open Space Committee, is here to give us an update on the Atwood property campaign, I think.
Yeah, Vicki and I, we're both co-chairs, are here tonight.
Oh, Vicki's here too, the other co-chair.
Because Vicki and I and the committee have been working really hard since you all approved at the July 16th hearing, the purchase and sale agreement. So I've been looking at all the elements, legal, financial, and technical stuff that's not as exciting, as well as educational outreach things, to how do we tell citizens now what's going on and get them involved. So tonight is the official launch of the campaign for, it used to be called either Atwood or the Prospect Street property or something, but its name is really the Two Brooks Preserve.
I like that.
You like that?
Yes, that's nice.
And so, and this is going to be the logo for the Two Brooks Preserve.
Woo!
Isn't that nice?
That is nice.
And that's done by Susan Asaf's sister-in-law, who's an artist. She donated that to us, and we all think it's very cool.
That is very cool.
Did you show that to the camera?
Yeah, we'll show it to the camera.
I don't know.
She can hold it up.
Oh, perfect, okay. So you've probably seen it, huh?
I have seen it. You can just stand like you are, like you're talking to them.
Okay.
Actually, it should be Sue, Linda can hold it up for the camera.
Yeah, that's been the fun part.
Yeah, Linda should hold it up.
Yes, have Linda.
Because the otter and I are such good friends. But there are otters out there in the Two Brooks Preserve, and there are two brooks. And there are otters all over. You see otter scat things all over the place. So we thought that was a very nice name to sort of get us thinking about it. And then to show you, if you don't know where it is generally, this map is just a, you know, it's not the most graphic, but you know, it's off Prospect and Soul Street, you know, in the corner there. And it's 113 acres, maybe more, or less, you know, because of the funny titles that go back so far, you don't know the exact acreage. And it shows about 15 acres of the old cranberry bog and the 20 acres of reservoir. There are a lot of forests out there, it's very forested, it's got a lot of wetlands and meadows. And as I mentioned at the July 16th hearing, this property is part of this swath of land that's over there, ranks in the top 20% of the healthiest environment, the environmentally most healthy properties in parcels in the state. Because of its aquatic systems, it's very, the aquatic systems are very rich because they are, they're all intact, as well as the riverous systems and the groundwater systems and everything. So that's one of the reasons they're rated so highly, is their water systems. But they also have all the filtration that comes in the forests and the meadows, so in terms of pollution control, it's a really valuable area. So it's in the top three healthiest areas in southeastern Mass., and it's in the top 20% of the whole state. So it's a treasure. And, excuse me, it brings all kinds of good qualities to Plimpton residents, but it also has the benefits that there are many plant and animal species who are, which are of special conservation concern that live out there too. The two sort of go together. If you have a healthy environment, you have more plants and animals that are going to be living out there, one of which, of course, is the otter. And so it's also, it's good besides taking care of the water aspects and the plant and animal aspects, it's going to maintain, help maintain Plimpton's rural character, which we noted on the residence survey a year ago, that was one of the top two priorities. The number one priority was saving water, water quality, water abundance in Plimpton, and the number two, just the same, was save Plimpton's rural character. So it fits into that. And thirdly, it's going to offer a lot of recreational and educational opportunities. There are going to be lots of passive trails and things back there for people to enjoy. And we're looking forward to working with the school and other organizations on hands-on learning, because there is so much out there that's unique and healthy in the state that we're going to try and get people out there to really understand it. So as you remember, the cost is $800,000, that's the price we inherited from the purchase and sale. And as you remember, you voted to support three sources of funding, CPA funding, money from bonds, for up to three house lots developed in the front over there, and private fundraising from individuals, foundations, and corporations. So we have been working to figure out how to get each of those, as Mark said, we've been taking particular attention the last couple of weeks on the warrant part of it, to look at how the bond will work, and to understand CPA funding and have an application at CPA and so on, so on. And we are ready to go out and start talking with individuals, so we'll do that in a few days. People are getting today in the mail a brochure that describes all this.
Really?
So each of you will have this in your box, and there you go. Fifty notes, isn't it?
This is fantastic. It is.
So that's the brochure that will go out to everyone in town, and it summarizes everything I just told you with some detail. And the other thing you can do is go on the town website via our direct contact, which is www.TwoBrooksPreserve.com. It's pretty cool. It takes you right to the Open Space Committee's page, so you know, you're still on the town of Plimpton website, but all the stuff is there. And we have the YouTube video of the July 16th presentations, because we thought with the experts there, it was really valuable, plus the good discussion from the residents. That's there, the good articles that Abe wrote for the local paper are there, because they were such a good description of the process. And we also have the brochure, we have a separate donation form, and some other information. So people who want to learn more can go into the website directly and read about it there. And what can residents do, it tells you right on the brochure, but first they can come to the special town meeting, September 20th, and vote yes, so we can go ahead and do all this. And two, they can contribute, because private fundraising is going to be an important part of this being a successful campaign, not just to buy it, but to get it up and running, and to, you know, see some of the potential that we just talked about here. And it's a safety valve for us too, it gives us some more flexibility in terms of how we really roll out, you know, the whole parcel. So, and we do have, as we mentioned a month ago, even before we announced, we do have 25,000 in donations, and since then, we haven't been soliciting, we didn't solicit those, those just came in, but we do have strong expressions of interest. So starting later this week, we will be going out and talking with people, and look forward to exceeding the 65,000 that we had talked about, July 16th was our minimum.
Right.
And we're aiming for 100, 250. That's what we think will give the foundation to really getting this thing launched, and that's where we hope we're going to go. So that, you'll hear more about that. I'll say to anyone who's interested, is it tax deductible contribution, just as if you were giving to a nonprofit, a town is tax deductible. And then Vicki has brought some special visitors. She's brought, first of all, some nice pictures from the preserve. I don't know how to quit. These are going to be at the library or whatever. So, and there is a library session, by the way, August 25th, I think it's 10:30 in the morning. People want to come over and hear more and ask questions, so we're going to have that. And then Vicki, come introduce our special guests.
That's cute.
They don't have names yet.
We're thinking possibly a naming conference.
Yeah, naming conference. Vicki painted yours, her husband made these.
Dave did.
Dave did both?
Yes.
Dave Alberti.
Dave Alberti did all that work, isn't that one?
So cute.
He just makes the stands and the magnets now, so we can bring them anywhere and put them anywhere.
So they could go. They're going to be inside the library, I think, and start them in a few days.
Yes.
And with an exhibit that we put up there. So yeah, we think we should get to know our local owners, don't you?
Great.
There they are.
They're there.
Yeah, they are, there they are. And so basically, we're off and running.
Oh, God, oh, you're broken! It's a menace.
So you're going to have the school get involved in this?
Well, in terms of the, which part?
The naming?
Oh, we haven't gotten that far yet.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah, we've looked to, there's so many fun ideas, I tell you.
Oh, the kids would love them.
The number of energetic, really creative ideas for involvement, we're going to keep fundraising even, you know, because we're going to have lots of neat things. So the things that we can't do in the short term, because there's so much to get done to get it done by September 20th in a significant way.
Yep.
But what it's doing is generating all kinds of interest long-term, of what people want to do as a carry-on, so it's going to be a lot of fun.
Great.
So yeah, so we'll be taking up on all those ideas, so we'll take these away, so you don't have them here permanently. But thank you all again for your support.
Oh, thank you.
It's very key. And it'll be a fun couple of weeks, and we're going to have articles in the paper every Friday, sort of following up on all this. And the website's up, and you'll see some things around town as we get closer to town meetings.
Great.
And we'll probably put things on Facebook to, yes, to support this, to coordinate?
To coordinate, yeah. Yeah, I don't know what's happening, but we're hoping people will pick up, you know...
Yeah, from the towns page, yeah.
No, no. So we're okay on that. And that's just the beginning. So that's it, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wonderful job, as usual.
I love these otters.
They're so cute, so cute.
I think, I'm thinking of otter hats, otter chachkes in the future. We all want otters on our desks, so I think it'd be possibilities for otters. Yeah, they're going to be very good, good otters, yeah.
So we were just going to go to, what, Harju, so that...
Harju, so that Linda would be done.
Okay.
So are you going to introduce that, in terms of the letter, or should I introduce it?
It's up to you, if you want me to. So we are in receipt of an application for earth removal. This is for Harju Limited Partnership, and it's regarding land on Main Street, and the parcels are identified as Map C2, Block 4, Lots 6, 7, and 9, and Map C3, Lots 8 and 11.
Do you want to see this?
And the application was received on August 6th, and may have since received a plan of land associated with it. So I believe now the appropriate course of action would be to put together packages for this and circulate it to the relevant boards and committees before this board tries to act on anything.
And it is a reminder that we did craft and pass the Earth Removal Bylaw at the last town meeting, still waiting for district attorney, or state district attorney, or attorney general approval, but a reminder to us that we still have the task ahead of writing policy and procedures, so we'll be working on that. I have been in touch with members of the Concom and gotten a copy of that to them, and they'd be the very first ones to take a look at it, and hopefully you'll let Planning Board in particular know, and other boards know. We'll have to get it digitalized. I think we have talked about in the future that part of the policy and procedures would be asking the applicant to send a digital form, so we can share it with everyone, and so we're not running around. And Linda may have more comments at this time, or maybe that's enough for now.
Yes, no, strictly, it's us, an application for stock filing, which we did know about when we were drafting the bylaw, and it's a customary thing for agriculture to do, especially cranberries, and I quickly breezed over the application. It, to me, doesn't look controversial, I think it's, they're doing it, you know, the way we thought they would. But it does need to go through Conservation Commission Review and the other committees, and come back here. But I don't anticipate any issues, I, you know, I haven't seen anything quickly in a quick look. And it is good that they're getting the process started, because this is the way it should work, is that it comes through the other committees who give you advice, and then we will have both the bylaw and its regulations, which have to be rolled out too, but soonish. So...
And the more basic piece, that actually the applicant did it exactly right, they expect that they are exempt, and the way we've written this is even if people think they're exempt, that they come to us, have the conversation, rather than just going merrily onwards.
Yeah, the way we put it in the bylaw, is that you can be exempt, it will be acknowledged by us, or even if you need a permit per se, it's not because there's something, there's other rules that you didn't know about, but they just have to confirm that those rules are applicable. But in either way, this is a very open process, it looks like they did exactly the right thing, and, you know, I don't anticipate any delays.
Great.
Okay. So I think we're back to probably appointments again, back to John's end of the table.
So do we want to go to council on eve? So, thank you for coming, Joy. We really wanted to get an update on some of your goals and strategies for the balance of the year.
Yeah, you know, things have been pretty gassed over the last few years. It's really formula break right now, and there's so much more to put in than there was last year. So first of all, we want to thank you guys for letting us have shared space where we are right now. And so, speaking of space, when, you know, when I came here, we were talking, the past director and I, about, you know, space in the police station being, you know, kind of designated to us, that's what she told me. But I guess that's not true.
That's...
That's correct.
And that's fine, that's fine.
We're going to put together a master plan, so everybody will have digs on the wish list, and then we'll figure out...
And that's fine, yep. So our thing is, it's not so much about the space, but a permanent space, like, people say that they don't want to be in because of the ambiance of the place, and they come in, they come in here to pay their bills, and then they're like, I mean, we just got a sign the other day, thank you for that too. But it's just, you know, the thing that they, I don't know, they just want a space that they can call their own, you know? And we're fine with it, you know, as far as what we're doing, that kind of thing. But, and this is great, if you use this space and that space and all that kind of stuff, but it's, it's really about having a permanent space. And, you know, we're not looking on altering or building or any of that kind of stuff. I was even thinking of suggesting the historic building. It's not used to front anything really, except for our exercise group. It is kind of, you know, big rooms upstairs, and there's only one lift there, that kind of thing, but, so anyways, this is like a future of the conversation, but I just wanted to bring that up, since we talked about space. And while we're talking about that, the reason why, we're thanking you for that room, but also for the kitchen, because we kind of been taking it over. The Meals on Wheels program, Halifax has been doing odds for three years, so we just took over Halifax, because they're renovating. And, you know, it's probably going to take just, probably just as long a time.
So we'll let go back to Halifax when they're done?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So anyways, that was, we're just doing that to the cemetery. So we're barring the kitchen too, it's not our kitchen, it's a lunchroom, other employees'. And we try not to step on toes, and not tie over crab, and not grab away the mouse, and, you know, and all that kind of stuff, you know what I mean? But it's really not our space, you know? So, you know, that being said, there's other things, like, we're trying to get the veterans in, kind of veterans day, and, you know, most senior centers have a veterans, you know, who roam, you know, and they, you know, they do that, and they are. We have an agent here, she's wonderful, but, you know, she's from another town, and, you know, she's not expected to do, you know, she did help pay for postage for a mail that did, because we had 200 veterans in this town. And we just want to, you know, acknowledge them, have a place for them to go, seniors and not seniors, you know, recognize Veterans Day. So we're planning an event, but I think we have that, if you will allow us to do that. You know, and you guys have been very accommodating to, you know, senior activities and show veterans to. And we're trying to, you know, incorporate other buildings too. So we have an exercise group at Woodlands, we have a couple of exercise groups at the historic building, and then we're also in coordination with the library, doing different activities. We try not to step on toes, we, you know, coordinate with them to, you know, do things that they don't do. You know, if they have a swimming group, they don't have a swimming, you know, that kind of thing. And, you know, it has grown over the year, we have volunteers now, you know, transportation volunteers, other volunteers, we have more board members, we get them every day, and people are calling all the time, and not just from this town, there are kids from other states calling and saying, can you take care of my mother, you know? So COA is getting, you know, the word out. So anyways, we have the Friends Group, which we're doing fundraisers, which is a big one, we have some fundraiser. And the thing is, we don't have a big group yet, but we are adding to that money with transportation money, because other towns charge for transportation, we have not yet, we just started this fiscal year. And, you know, we're doing a big fundraiser, that all that money would go towards that, and then it would be in supplement to town budget, the formula grant from the state, and then we have the friend group money. So you could spend it on whatever we need, like furnishings, anything that seniors feel would make our senior center, which I can't call it a senior center yet, because it's our space. So I'm just saying, you know, we are, I'm working towards getting monies and funds to do that, and trying to move stuff around, as far as where it should go, like exercises paid by the grant, getting some other grants, and that kind of stuff. I have employees that are paid by the state, which is the receptionist, I have my outreach worker that is paid by, you know, one mill grant. Also, we have people that are paid, you know, paid just mileage to do volunteer driving. So we're trying to be creative with money, meaning we're not spending it, we're trying to, you know, save it and trying to do whatever we can. The Friends Group is a, I want to say, and they can fundraise, and they can give donations, and they can, you know, do that kind of stuff too. So it's not really all about the town providing, it's really just space we need, you know? And we're not saying any specific space, we're just trying to figure out what's our role. In transportation, we have volunteers, but we do need to think about getting another van, and we put in last year. And the reason being is, the mileage that goes up, the less the trade in value is going to be. And we cannot accommodate handicapped people. So I do want to go for next town meeting for, you know, a handicapped van, and, I mean, I don't know, you know...
So would you be trading in the other van?
Yeah.
Okay, so you do only have one van at the end?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the van that we have is not really, I mean, it's not handicapped, so, I mean, you have to, you don't, can't get people that are in walkers and hides get in, you know, so we really have to, you know? So we're kind of just putting that out there. And I'm not asking for a, I just want to get it out all out there, but, you know, it's just that we're trying to move along like other senior centers do, and just, you know, do, and do, to, on the seniors, I mean, we're getting calls every day for, you know, different needs, you know? Help us fill out this application, or help us get, you know, mass help, or we need, today somebody was paying $900 for insurance, and she is on that here. It's crazy. So I don't think they know, you know what I mean? They just don't know. And we just want to get it out there, that we're here, that we're here, that some people might, you know, help them have, save them that a kid money for, you know...
How many people are on your board?
On the board? We have nine, but we have another one coming in now, we just had a new one.
And they're all Plimpton people?
Actually, tonight, which one? And then tomorrow, yeah, they're all Plimpton, yeah. And then tomorrow is another, she's actually a volunteer that wants to be on the board. So I think we're at our max, we're now. We had a couple of resigns... We had a couple resign, but we've done...
So, two or three things for me, I really appreciate what you're doing, really appreciate you coming in. I think we've been feeling a little in the dark of what's going on over there.
I know, and I'm sorry, and I, you know, I said that, I think I need to, like, email the board and email, because it's so, everything that goes on is so quick, every day, there's something new.
No, this is great, and I mean, maybe you should come in every three months and update us, or maybe send us a bulletin every couple of months, and that's really helpful. Just kind of as an aside, please remember, I came in a year ago and mentioned that Community Preservation Committee, there is a spot for a COA board member.
Right, and I mentioned that a few years ago, yeah.
So, maybe I'll come in again and plead again for someone, because we'd love to have you guys represented, because we have money over there, too, for housing issues. I think we all understand that it would be lovely for you guys to have a permanent space, and a space to call your own, and I think it's probably the dream of all three of us up here, that as we work on the master plan with the grant money we have, an important piece of that is ultimately finding a space. All that may take some time.
No, I don't know, that's, everything's going along as usual, besides that, but we have a coffee hour, and we have a bunch of people coming in for the coffee hour every morning, and then we asked them why they weren't coming in anymore, they said it wasn't a senior center ambiance, it was like a conference room, and they were like, we had to take the chances and put them in the circle, and...
That beautiful old room down there, that schoolmarm room, that's a beautiful room, that's got so much ambiance.
Anyways, that was the conversation.
I think, well, go ahead, Christine.
Well, I was just gonna, my feelings are the same, it would be great to have some space for you guys. I don't know if there's grant money that would be available to help us build a senior center. I wouldn't think it would need to be super elaborate, people aren't staying there, you just need a working kitchen, maybe an office for the nurse, and, you know, some offices, some big room for exercise and just meetings. So, this doesn't need to be a big elaborate thing, but it might be worth pursuing if there is grant money out there, because we do have town land where maybe we could incorporate something into the master plan, some type of senior housing, or if not on this parcel, maybe we identify another parcel of town-owned land that would be appropriate for that.
Yeah, and actually, I've been to a couple of now COA conferences where they do have the senior center as part of the Housing Authority, if they're on the, you know, whatever floor, and, yeah.
Well, we don't have a Housing Authority, and I don't think we're going to have a Housing Authority, but you still need some space, some designated space, I completely agree with you, and I think you've done a great job, too, and there's not, you know, there hasn't been a whole lot to work with, but we're here to try to help you, but, you know, I think it baby steps is all I can really say.
And just to be explicitly clear on the front, and on the police, we just haven't had that discussion whatsoever, that when they move on, I mean, I think there's gonna be a big list of people that are gonna be interested in that, which doesn't mean that, you know, that COA won't get strong consideration, it just, I don't think we've had any discussion whatsoever yet.
Well, we did take a tour last week, and it was almost like going through the historic building, because, you know, the rooms were...
Lots of small rooms, it's...
And I get that, you know what I mean?
It's really not ideal.
Yeah, it's not easily accessible.
No, it really, in my opinion, would be more appropriate for the, all of the boards that are downstairs to be up there, planning, conservation, all of that.
Okay.
The what?
The historical society building, is that, that's it? Well, that's what we're talking about, yeah.
But that's not great accessibility...
The downstairs meeting room, is it a safe in there?
Yes, but the downstairs...
The big room upstairs is...
Yeah.
The problem with, if we were gonna do it, we'd have to put in an elevator, whether it's down here or at the whole town.
Yeah, they have.
They have, but you know, people don't like using it.
Each senior would then have to take five minutes. Yeah, I know, but they, yeah, it's not...
Well, it takes a while, there's only one or two floors.
They do have that new elevator, it's not, it's not an elevator, but it's a lift, some, a wheelchair, or in a couple of people up, I don't know if it's public.
Linda had a question, too.
I was just wondering where you were, that none of the spaces, the PHS building, the one out here, the old building out here, but it might be cheaper, I don't know if there's any grant money to get like an architectural advisor, you know, for this kind of thing, on amending buildings to fit, you know?
A need.
The need, because you're gonna, you have two spaces, one coming up here and one in PHS, it might be cheaper to modify some of those spaces that aren't used very, PHS could be used a lot more.
Oh, yeah. That's what I'm saying, I mean...
And get a grant to look at, instead of building something new, first to see what it would be.
Exactly, because it's not like it's, it's not a museum or anything, there's nothing in there, you know what I mean?
You knock down walls, I mean, especially up here.
Yeah. I know, it costs money.
The old townhouse?
Huh?
The old townhouse?
No, 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 I mean, within the building...
Oh, up here, yeah, sure.
I'm just wondering if your grants are available to sort of architecturally evaluate the things that are around.
We need to do the whole building, we need to start now thinking about the whole building before the police station, you know, is moved into.
Yeah, yeah, I can see, but that one...
I like the idea of Christine's suggestion, you know, if there's grant money, that maybe we could do something. And maybe there's grant money available for elevators, whether it's here or at the other.
Maybe.
Yeah, and I think the previous director went for some grant money from bedroom, and I think it was very...
But if it's gonna be in elevators, it's gotta be done right.
Yeah.
While we're talking about grants, am I remembering correctly that we had an auto dealership that was floating an idea of a van with a lot of advertising on it?
Their logo on it.
Oh, yeah, the wrapping up a van, yeah, and that paid like $450 a month, you know?
So, that might be something to pursue. I would think a dealership might maybe sharing a van between two or three towns, and they'd get all the advertising and credit, and that'd be a pretty easy thing.
That would be pretty easy.
I heard something from Old Colony Planning, Old Colony Transportation, that they wanted to try to incorporate Carver, Plumpton, and, I'm not sure what they were talking about, but they were gonna try to get a van that was gonna accommodate, you know?
That makes huge sense.
It sure does.
And I think that's the shared service thing that sometimes is gonna work in certain realms and not work in other realms, that'd be well worth exploring.
I mean, the way we have it right now is if anything is without, outside of a 10-mile radius, that we have to have volunteers in there, and, because it's huge cost outside of that, we don't have a van that can do it. So, yeah.
Can you clarify that a little bit? So, if somebody's going to an appointment outside of 10 miles, we do what?
Yeah, a volunteer.
In their own car, or what?
Paid mileage through Old Colony Planning, so pay mileage.
And why can't we use a van?
Because he's taken, he's appointed someone, they want him around here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, to go to, you know, Quincy, or, I mean, you can't go to Boston, I mean, because all the other people get sent.
You also mentioned, you also mentioned that people from outside town were looking at utilizing the service? Did I misunderstand that?
No, Old Colony Planning was talking about including Plumpton with their, it's some plan they have, it's not.
With some regional transportation?
Yeah.
No, I guess I misunderstood.
No, that was, she was, is getting calls from people who are out of town for senior services for their parents who live in Plumpton.
Oh, okay, okay, now I understand.
We get those calls all the time, the kids call, like, my parent doesn't have, and that was one of the things we're looking at, we're trying to find out if we can find a list of people who lost their licenses, who are homebound, who need rides, and that sort of thing, because families, I don't know, you can't get those.
You know what'd be nice is if we could do some senior housing, possibly on this campus or another parcel, and incorporate a senior center into the housing, where there was like a gathering space for people to come that lived there and people that didn't, right? For bingo, or whatever.
Yeah.
And not only senior, but gathering, all gatherings.
Right, all gatherings.
An example of that is that the Woodlands there, they have, you know, their own little community, and we're trying to get them to, you know, we go to their community, but we're trying to get them to ours, and they, that's where they gather.
Yeah, that would be nice.
They're like, oh, this is where, you know, and it just seems like, you know, a place that they would go, so, I mean...
It's just logical.
Yeah, yeah, so, I agree.
It'd be even better if we can get a developer to pay for it.
Yeah. I would like to see it to the extent you can pull together, you know, what you think your requirements are, so that we have a better idea, I mean, everything's a trade-off, you know, we have a fire station that we're talking about renovating, and we've got the police going, and it's, there's never enough money, so it's a question...
But, I mean, it's not really about money, it's really about accommodations, and it's not a whole lot, like you say, it's a couple of private rooms, I mean, we need the confidentiality, for the elderly, to her, and, you know, phone calls, and, you know? Speaking of that, yeah, do we ever find out about the telephone line?
No, because our provider, who actually programs the phone lines, apparently they're no longer in the equation, so Verizon did what they needed to do, so it's been installed, but now we have to figure out if we're going with a different provider, or if we can get somebody in to do more of a one-time fix to physically activate the line.
Right.
So, that's something that we're pursuing, but we have to figure out, cost-wise, if it makes more sense to just sign on with a service provider, so that they're on call, and if different things happen with the phone lines, or if we need to add new lines, that that's relatively easy, or is it worth paying more but just having them come out one time and activating it? And that's something that we're still kind of looking into.
Okay, just the reason why I ask is that the receptionist they have, she doesn't work for us, she gets paid from the state, and I called her on her cell phone, she called me on her cell phone, and she ran out of minutes last month, and I was like, oh, I was like, oh my God, I'm so sorry, and, because we don't wanna bother, you know, people in here, and, yeah.
Most of the calls come in on the Selectmen's line, on the 2700 line, and what I've found is a lot more efficient, because I think some of the other offices were actually physically walking down the hall to alert your office that there was a call.
Oh, they intercom?
If you just, I started intercoming, yes, so that we don't have to keep, and that's worked very well.
Okay.
It's just a matter of not being able to transfer, which would be much easier.
Right.
But the framework is there, so we can pursue that and get it activated, and then, I would say, once your new line is activated, we should do a lot to publicize that, and eventually the calls will dwindle that are coming in on the Selectmen's line.
I know, because we're all giving out our cell phones, and I was putting them in the bulletin, too, because I, I was like, but anyways, so, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not that, we'll just a couple of offices, a large room, and a kitchen, that's it. I mean, we're really not asking for a whole lot, and right now, we're working with what we have, and we're very grateful for it, you know, and, you know, and we're doing pretty good with it, I think, without stepping on toes, and then, you know, sometimes I'm like, oh, you know, the boxes are getting pretty high in there, we gotta, you know what I mean? You know, we're gonna kinda keep a, yeah, I mean, I have to do that, right?
I'd appreciate it if you'd sit once a month with Liz and, you know, just make sure, so we know Liz will be feeding back, and then every three months, we can get back together with ourselves.
Yeah, yeah.
Like tonight. I mentioned the club, we talked about that, the outreach, and, I haven't been able to, got a bad back, so I haven't been going down there, but I'll make sure that happens.
Yeah.
I have to say, I'm, I wanna make sure that the budget, you know, it's been going up compared to where we were. Now, I know four or five years ago, we were, everything was volunteer, we didn't pay anybody anything, and I know that we can't continue that way, but...
But, you know, and we had the state, the state.
Yeah. So, and to the extent that you can ensure that you're in tune with the library, with the veterans agent, with the different groups, because that's really important, we have a lot of people...
Oh, I didn't, yeah.
That are doing things, and, you know, library does a lot of things, and they don't have a lot of money either.
No.
Yeah, I know, we share the costs, and, yeah, yeah, and a lot of stuff we, you know, we get, you know, just for instance, the Cavell ice cream freezer rope, it stopped and shocked, like, the whole social paper.
That's great.
You know, I mean, those kind of things, you know, they happen, and, yeah, so, yeah, that's what I'm saying, things are moving along, and I actually talked to the guy today for the Formula Grant, the state, and he's like, I see you're in the negative, you're in the negative $600, and he's like, let's talk about what you spent it on, but it wasn't that, we weren't spending it on, you know, anything, we were just short from the year before, you know what I mean? And so, so we, you know, we kinda talked about what, you know, what we spent it on, and that kind of thing, and he's like, yeah, you know? So, you know, it's, I'm trying to get everything, you know, as much for free as I can.
Great.
Yeah, so...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Right, thank you.
Liz, maybe if we can reach out to Old Colony Planning Council, Senior Services, and just have them alert us if any type of grants come on the books for creating some Council on Aging facilities, or something like that, I mean, I don't know if they do or not, but it might be good to...
That would be good.
That they're at least keeping their, you know...
Yeah, even for somebody to do an architectural review, like Linda was suggesting, because there's been, another department had even had the idea of if we decommissioned the trailer out here, could that be moved to a different spa on town-owned land with some landscaping around it and kind of utilized for that purpose, but there's been no ideal suggestion made that I think would really accommodate them, so maybe we need to explore funding to see how spaces could be modified to do that.
Okay, all right, good.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you so much.
I'm very thankful to make a list to talk to you about, so now I know it's...
Perfect, thanks, Troy.
Do you have something you wanna talk to us about?
Oh, I, um, I have a...
Oh, okay.
Okay, do we need to do the Council on Aging appointment, or?
We can do that, do you wanna do that, Charlie?
Yeah, why don't we do that first?
That's for Michelle Lanes.
So, I make a motion that we appoint Michelle Lanes to the Council on Aging Secretary until June 30th, 2019.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We do the liquor, as you said, so we can get...
Okay, so you have the rest for the file, perfect, thank you. So, this is for the one-day liquor license, and here's the folder.
I guess we just read this. So, I make a motion that we approve a one-day liquor license, special license policy for...
Is it Friends of Reunion Farm?
Um, so, it's Friends of Plumpton, but it would be actually, never mind, I guess.
Okay.
And what's the date?
September?
September 15th, okay. And this is a charity event to donate to Two Brookes Preserve, which we... which we were just talking about. So, all those in favor?
All right, I'll second your motion.
All those in favor?
What the motion, who made the motion?
John made the motion. I'll second the motion and...
And I'll say aye.
Aye.
All right, so this is beer and wine. It's at 27 Main Street or?
271.
271 Main Street is the location.
Reunion Farm.
Okay, so it's at Reunion Farm on 915 from 5:30 to 9:00 P.M. Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, awesome, thank you.
So a nice social link and a nice way to support the Two Preserves.
To support, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
I guess we have to sign here too.
Oh, that's great.
That's terrific.
Thanks for doing that.
Thank you, thank you. Should be fun. Are you going to promote the heck out of it?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I've already seen the Facebook pages.
Okay.
Good, thanks, Jen.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
See ya. Was, I heard somebody coming in to talk about the hazardous waste?
Not that I know of.
Okay. As far as I could tell, it went all right.
Just acknowledge that it happened.
Yeah. It was Saturday morning.
Mm-hmm.
I thought it was arranged well this time so that the traffic went down below so that people just coming in to dump their normal trash could stay up above.
Yeah, that was smart, yeah.
So it worked well. Letter to residents and our businesses regarding town bylaws. I know Christine, you had suggested maybe one letter.
Well, not necessarily one, but doing a letter to residents as well.
Yes, I agree with that. I wanted to keep the business, at least my headset was, we keep the business separate and send that out to them. Maybe the one to the residents should be a little softer, maybe.
I'd love for everyone to know. I'd love for it to be more or less an announcement. I hope that maybe the zoning enforcement officer can take a look at the letter before it go out.
It's a good idea.
And maybe Allen, Bylaws Review Committee also. And I think that's a nice letter. I don't remember if in the draft we mentioned the bylaws.
We did.
But really, it's a whole concerted effort of getting our act together in general. And it'd just be nice to let the citizens know what we're up to and that we're going to continue to try to find the right balance of, well, the right balance on enforcing rules without it being overburdening.
Right, I think that's exactly right.
Could we include it with a warrant for the special?
Yeah, include the...
The letter to residents?
Yeah.
So that way we save...
We have to find out because we were going with a low-cost print option.
Okay.
And so that's why the spacing on the warrant that you signed looks a little odd. It was so that it folds over just right.
Okay.
And so we didn't go on to two pages.
So that may not work then, okay.
I'd be in favor of keeping kind of those issues separate.
Okay, so we would just have to pay for mailing that.
Yeah, can you find out?
We have a mail permit that was actually just renewed effective 26.
Okay.
A new mailing permit. So we could work with them at the post office and figure out.
It's just going to be a one-page thing. It wouldn't be a big, big deal.
The dog licenses, when do those go out, do you know?
I want to say it's March or April, but I could be mistaken.
Okay. If we could just check with Tara. If it's earlier, we could maybe enclose it with that.
Okay.
Okay, but if it's not, then we can...
Well, don't they expire in January now? Aren't you renewing?
I know you need to do it by March in most towns.
Okay.
I don't know if it's different here. I'm just thinking for my own pets.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
What I always knew to be. I think you have until March and then they're good for that year.
This seems pretty timely with a new zoning enforcement officer coming on.
Yeah, I don't think we should wait, right.
And with the bylaws presumably will be approved by the Attorney General, September, October.
Yeah. So maybe we should chew for the end of September somewhat.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
Okay. And I thought we had factored into the selectman expense budget a small amount for mailings of this nature.
Perfect.
So that would fit well.
So we have a draft and we're going to continue working on that, but maybe work on a separate draft, one for businesses and one for residents, is that?
We can separate them out and circulate it to the board.
Be great. So why don't we take the one we've got for the business and run it by Allen, both Allens? And then, do you want to draft something for the, just the resident?
Sure, I had taken one and kind of softened it a little bit, so why don't I separate that out into two documents and resend it?
Okay.
Zoning enforcement.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Good.
More goals for coming year? We want economic development. I don't think there's a lot that's going on right now.
Not right now.
It's August.
Financial management, we did, Liz had the team meeting. I think that's going to help us get that piece of our business in shape. Public safety, we're still rolling along?
Rolling right along. Last meeting in Public Safety Committee, three weeks ago, everything, maybe a couple of weeks behind. No real problems, no real complaints. I did a little tour today. The jail cells look beautiful. And off we go.
It's nice to see the walls up so people can ride by and see that something's going on.
But actually, literally, the cells are concrete blocks back there and it looks very solid. I think we're all going to be quite safe.
I had a couple of things I was going to mention in my update, but I can mention it now.
Sure.
We received word from Old Colony Planning Council that there are hazard mitigation grants available. So I was planning to sign up for the webinar, which is free and it's an informational session so that you can figure out what you can actually apply for.
What would that encompass?
Um, it could be any number of things. Some communities use it to either develop or if you already have one, kind of renew your hazard mitigation plan. So that's something I'd probably talk to Pat Dillon about as far as emergency management, because he's been poking around with some different things too through MIMA and trying to make sure that the town is still up to date with everything on that end. They can also sometimes look at different things, like if you have dams that might need a special action plan or things like that.
I think all our dams are gone now, aren't they?
Well, dams.
Dams around town, I think they've all been...
Have they all been decommissioned?
Did the Winnetou Tuxit, is that all cleaned up down on Winnetou Tuxit Road?
I'm not sure.
I don't know either.
With the wood bridges, you mean? No, that's, yeah. I know that, that's a case of the pilings rotting out so that it doesn't support the weight that it would take for the big ones. So that's going to come on the highway anyways because they're going to have to, that's going to be a big job when they do it.
So there's that. And then there's also, I was told by somebody I know that there are emergency preparedness grants that are going to be available from the state in the near future. And that's similar to the hazard mitigation, but a little bit different. It involves getting grant funding for a consultant to come in, sit down with all the relevant people, say here at the townhouse, different departments, and identify anything that we think are weaknesses or would put us potentially in peril if there were a storm or a large-scale catastrophic event. So you might say, you know, risk from falling trees or limbs or the fact, I know during some of these last storms that we had back in March, we were without power for a long time. We could also identify the need to have a shelter in place here, like something a little, that could carry people over for a little bit longer if need be. So the funding would pay for a consultant to sit down with us, identify any weak spots, and then they put together a plan for what could be done to actually correct some of those things. And then you apply to the state to see if they'll fund the actual work, whatever it might be. So that's sort of interesting. It's kind of like a two-part funding process. So it's worth pursuing, I think, at the very least.
Sure.
Especially where we'll have a new fire chief coming on board and so on. I think it kind of ties in with the emergency management piece.
Great.
Can I give you one more?
Yes.
At the Old Colony Planning Council annual meeting, there was a gentleman sitting at the table with me that was talking about the Mass dot Small Bridge Program and it's for bridges that are 20 feet or greater in length and it's for, basically for small towns like us. And it's grants to do the work, but the bridges have to be town-owned. So might be something to look into with highway if we've got bridges that have some issues.
Especially that Winnetou Tuxit, that might be a natural.
That'd be perfect.
Yep, so, okay.
Because that's going to cost a fair amount of money when I was talking to Jim Mulcahy a couple of months ago.
Right.
Okay. Volunteerism.
Coming out of the woodwork for Two Brooks Preserve!
What I tell you, it's just amazing. I hope we don't wear those people down. We need them.
That'll be, and there'll be a lot of ongoing work there. There'll be trails to build, probably a little boardwalk to build, parking lot to build, plenty of work going onwards. So people who want to jump in on that will be needing help.
Great. Can, you know, as part of that, can you address, you know, when you have to get up and explain the maintenance, the ongoing maintenance after it's in place?
Which will be volunteered to in the same...
Because I've heard a couple of, you know, seen a couple of things on Facebook.
Yeah, and I, to be overly blunt, kind of a little bit of misinformation. Cato's Ridge, for example, all the maintenance, every bit of it is done with private funds and private labor. And I think the expectation is that the same thing will happen at Two Brook.
I think you should be tooting your heart because it's a great job.
Yep.
Yeah, certainly.
Technology? Anything, Liz, I think we're still waiting for Michael on the master plan.
We're waiting for him to write up the master plan.
That was the liquor license paper.
Um, he was also doing some work for the folks downstairs as far as getting them set up with a copier and everything. So that's still plugging along.
Have you been downstairs? Have they pushed the?
No.
It looks good.
It looks good because we had to put in another desk for the zoning officer. So they pushed all the files back and it's not bad.
Good.
Yeah. It's now, rather than just a pit, it's a good-looking pit. Okay, town administrator update.
Okay, so first we have, I'm working with the people from the state and with a rep from Eversource and Columbia Gas. We're finalizing the applications that those two utility companies have to authorize and eventually sign off on. And that'll be more money in incentives in addition to the 243,000.
Wow.
But they have to calculate it based on kilowatt-hours and terms, I guess, for the gas bills. So more to come on that. And once that part's done, then we have the authorization to proceed with the work. We had 25 applicants for the fire chief position. Chief Benjamino and I went through all of them and did our first round of screening this morning. And it has been narrowed down to six individuals. So they will be the six people who go through the full assessment process. The assessment process, it's interesting how they'll set it up. They're going to have an HR-type problem for the people to work through as well as sort of testing how they would manage an actual incident by using like a simulation of program that's set up. So that part is exciting and it's moving along. We're thinking it'll probably take place towards the middle or end of September because one of the other things, they're going to be required to write a program for us on how they would handle some different things with call firefighters and a call-based department. So it'll take them a little while to kind of fulfill that assignment. So we need to allow enough time between notifications and the interviews. We have not notified the six individuals yet. The other people who are not advancing were notified today, but those six, we're holding off until we know the exact date and time that we want to schedule them for.
Great.
So that part's moving along. Chief Benjamino and I are also working on setting up the bid process for that surplus fire engine. I think I mentioned last time, municipal bid didn't really yield a lot of results. So we're working on assembling all the documents we need to do a sealed bid process as opposed to just posting it online. But that'll be taking place soon. I spoke with somebody from FinCom today and I think what we should plan to do is have me attend one of their meetings after we've advertised the exhaust system project for the fire station. And once we have an idea of what it will actually cost and have quotes back, then I can go sit with FinCom, let them know actual numbers and we can figure out how we're going to work that because it'll pretty much wipe out the building maintenance account. And even though we'll have money coming in eventually from the fire engine.
Right.
It's not a direct transfer. And I'm a little reluctant to propose something that just wipes out a whole account without talking with them first.
Okay.
So we have to figure out the best way to do it. The old townhouse, we haven't received any quotes yet for the painting in the windows, but we've received a lot of interest from prospective bidders. So multiple entities have requested the specs and the prevailing wage rates.
Good.
So I'm sure we'll get some items in on that. And I did follow up more for Christine. I put a call into District Five about that strap grant opportunity for the population less than 7,000. That was something that Christine had mentioned was available and I had received a notification about. And we were looking into possibly that Ring Road area and utilizing it for paving. But when we ran it by highway, they thought that somehow it affects local aid. And they had already done one a while back and it just, it sounded a little bit odd. So I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. So I put a call into District Five and I'm waiting to hear back.
I think we missed the window, but it's something to keep in mind for next year.
It is. I think that, well, I know that they do it every year. And we could also figure out at that point if it's better to just kind of roll it in with the Chapter 90 money.
Might be, it's a lot of money.
If it's just better to do next year as a standalone project. So that's been going on. We've been busy. And let's see, we're now correspondents. We have requests from Council on Aging to utilize the town green. One is on September 16th and this is for Friends of Plimpton COA. And then the other request is also for the town green on November 12th. And this is a joint event with Council on Aging and Veterans.
What are they doing exactly?
Um, it looks like they're doing sort of a cookout for both of these events. The Veterans one is going to be a ceremony at the green followed by lunch here at the townhouse. And then the September event looks like it's going to be a cookout-type setup. And they're going to park at the townhouse lot and they're going to be serving hot dogs. Okay, so the September one is also, oh, this is, okay, it's a bake sale, yard sale, craft sale, book sale fundraiser.
Here?
Um, it looks like on the town green.
And this is Council on Aging?
Yes.
Would you make sure that they're locked in with the library for one?
Yes, I will do that. The Veterans one, as I mentioned, it's actually, the ceremony is a flag demonstration. And they'll be taking down all the decorations that same day.
So Roxanne should be tied into that one.
I'm sure she is, but I think we should make sure. If you sign this tonight, I think I might take these and hold on to them and run them by some of the departments.
Good.
Just to make sure that...
So our motion should be dependent on other department approval anyway.
I would do it contingent upon the other department signing.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion, we approve each of these applications contingent on other department's approval as well.
All right, I'll second.
All those... All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we have this certificate that keeps getting left around the townhouse and other places in town. Bree found one on a gas pump.
What is it?
It's, looks like it has to do with the establishment of Plimpton. It's interesting.
"The Establishment by the Grace of God of the Kingdom of Great Britain and Northern England and Other Realms and Territories."
It's interesting. It was sent specifically to the selectman's office and then, um...
Head of the Commonwealth, Defender of the Faith, do hereby dissolve the State of Massachusetts. Dissolve recognition of the State of... Oh, we're succeeding. Seceding.
Yeah, and it's come in numerous times.
Interesting. Okay.
So that's...
Is this like Martha's Vineyard where every year they try to succeed the State?
I don't know. They keep mailing it to us.
Can I, can I take a look?
I'd like to, I'd like to get a copy of that. I'll check in with you.
And then Bree found another one elsewhere in town. But they've mailed it numerous times.
All right.
Good luck to them.
Is that what this Establishment of Plimpton certificate is?
Yes.
Okay.
So that we can say it was received. So Plimpton Halifax Express, we have artist Elsie Goldstein has work on display at the Plimpton Public Library through August. And there are some very nice photos in here. More Tales of Old Plimpton and the Denet bus routes have been assigned and published. And that does it for correspondence.
I've got one and two updates. We want to do that. The, talked about the sound system, having somebody come in and look. So next Monday or Tuesday, I'm waiting for, uh, August to get back to me. But next Monday or Tuesday, they're going to come in. And on Wednesday and Thursday, there's a company called Access Audio Video that Area 58 actually works with. They're going to come in and take a look. So we'll see whether this is something we can do, what kind of money we're talking.
Okay.
And then unclear to me how we left the flag policy last selectman's meeting as far as putting flags up on the telephone poles, because I'd kind of like to move forward on that.
Oh.
Did we, did we get that to...
I felt like we were all enthusiastic about it.
I think we just wanted to get a price.
Okay.
Okay, I'll work with Steve then to get a price.
Yeah, that's good. He'd be good.
Yeah.
I had sent something to Kingston to ask them, but I didn't hear back.
There's what?
Somewhere near your office in Kingston.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, they have Evergreen, Main, Summer Street, the whole place.
Yeah, it's very pretty. It really is nice.
And I kind of liked your idea. You put in some flags of Debra Sampson.
Yeah, Debra Sampson too. A little bit different, yeah.
Okay. Dates to remember. Well, it's like an open meeting. The next two are September 10th and September 24th, so we'll be skipping Labor Day. When do we go back to regular hours?
I thought we did in September.
I think the Monday after, following Labor Day, is we start our regular schedule.
So there should be one...
So there should be one in between, right? The 17th?
Right.
So we'll add that?
Well, maybe she left it off because of the special town meeting. I'm not really sure.
Yeah, we have a special town meeting that week. And maybe we're seeing if we can do every other week.
I didn't, yeah, maybe that's why. Do you want to leave it off for now? And then if something comes up that we need to address that week of special town meeting, then we add it back on?
Well, we'll put a town meeting on, I mean, an open meeting anyways for the 20th.
Right, so it kind of already gets taken care of. All right, we'll leave it as is then.
Okay.
Might I mention, a community preservation committee meets Thursday night. We have our public hearing about the Atwood property. And I mean, we have every expectation that it'll go well and the committee will approve it, but there is that step yet to go through. And we welcome public comment. Anyone that wants to come to that meeting, speak in favor. And particularly, if there's anyone who wants to speak against, we'd like to hear.
Good. So minutes.
Okay. All right. I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of July 22nd as written. They're not actually on the agenda.
July 23rd.
I'm sorry, July 23rd.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that's the 7/23.
Did we have the 8/6? No.
Did you, you seconded that?
Yes.
I never saw 8/6.
No, 8/6 would have been our last meeting. Right, so no. So we'll have to hold that. But we did see the executive session from 8/6, though.
Yes.
Yes.
And we're going to vote on those?
Yep.
Might as well.
I'll make a motion that we accept the executive session minutes from August 6th as written.
Second.
Whoops.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else we need to talk about? I'll make a motion that we...
Are we going to do ransom raves?
Oh, you're right.
You're right.
And I know Mike's got one, so you have it.
All right. Can I go, do you want to go first?
No, you go right ahead.
All right, so mine are quick. Two, uh, two raves. First is for all the volunteers that have come out to help move this project forward, the Two Brooks Reserve, all of the community interest and people that, who haven't necessarily been volunteers who are stepping forward to help out with this. It's great.
It is.
I mean, this is what makes Plimpton so special, exactly. And then my second raid is to Chief Benjamino and Liz for the fire chief screening process. I feel so confident that we are going to have a, have some competent and qualified leadership over there. It's really so exciting. And it just, I'm blown away. I am just absolutely blown away. So thank you. Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
It's exciting.
It's been a great process, and Chief Benjamino has just provided so much...
Goodness, yep.
My gosh, I know. We are so lucky to have him.
Mike, you have it.
So this is slightly long-winded, but there was one other article in the Plimpton Halifax Express this week, and that was their editorial that was entitled, "We Stand for Press Freedom", part of the response to the Boston Globe, their nationwide request for newspapers to write editorials about press freedom. So I had this kind of cool experience last week in my home that was built in 1729, and a very strong woman was standing up and reading this thing aloud to a bunch of people in the kitchen that were cooking. And as beautifully written as this, spoken aloud in an antique Cape farmhouse in a little tiny town, almost 50 years before the American Revolution, almost 50 years before even this idea of press freedom had been brought up. Well, really brought goosebumps to everyone's, uh, everyone, to everyone, regardless of the politics involved, just beautiful writing and beautiful sentiment. And so much of what small towns in New England and this country are based on, those kinds of things. So Plimpton Halifax Express, that thing, that editorial apparently was mentioned in the New York Times last Thursday, and so we've hit the big time. And I salute the editorial board for what they did on that.
Yeah, job well done.
Great job. I have two raves. One rave is for Dave and Ricky Alberti. If you come into the townhouse at times, you will find a basket up front in the townhouse full of vegetables with this little sign that says, "Please take as many as you need", all from their farm, the work they've done on Two Brooks Preserve, and then the hurdy-gurdy. I mean, it's just, they're amazing people. I also have a rave for Biff and Allison McMenney. From, uh, they're actually from Halifax. And they went in over to the Plimpton Historical Society and weeded and mulched the area that the Boy Scouts had done a couple of years ago. That was just overgrown. They're not even from Plimpton, but they love Plimpton.
Oh, that was nice.
Great to have them. Maybe we can encourage them to come to Plimpton. So I'll make a motion, we close the meeting.
Yeah, who?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Awesome.